So we will call the meeting to order. Roll call, everyone is present. And let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll move on to changes to the agenda. We have some highlighted ones we'll go through first. We are adding donations, item D3, and we are also adding a donation, item D4. I'll read through these as we go. We also have a board member asked that when it comes to personnel, that we be a little more transparent with the public and we let them know what step and lane they're hiring at, where they'll be placed on the master schedule, where they'd be placed in the MSDA contract, or even the non-affiliated handbook. So I will read through all those changes as we go through the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to change?
I would like to, in, under personnel, I would like to take number two and number five out of the consent agenda for further discussion.
Okay, so number two and number five.
Teresa, can I also just, so the board is aware with the agenda, you're going to see two strike-throughs.
Mm-hmm.
So let me just quickly, if you're all right with that, just so you guys know what they mean. The strike-through for number seven is because Haley never resigned, so that should never be on there. So that's totally a strike-through. Then the second one is number 20, we already approved Mr. Evans as a coach, so we're not going to reapprove him, that's all right. So they're still on the agenda, but just note they're strike-through. You will not be voting on anything with those two at all.
Okay. Okay, so we will remove personnel, item E2 and E5. We will add them now under discussion. We'll make 9J and 9K. So 9J will be the hiring of Kelly Masters as Student Service Center Advisor, and J will be the approval of hiring Trevor and Kelly as Community Education Co-Directors. Are there any further changes that anyone sees? Okay, I will, looking for a motion then to accept the changes?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes to the consent agenda.
Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we will look for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion by Tim. Second by Pat. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to public input. Tiff's, oh, there she is. Nope, nobody, nobody here would like to speak that's in person? Onto recognition and good things happening. Thanks for a great school year, LO staff. You are appreciated, and we are excited for you to return in August. Also, congratulations to our 2022 graduates and 2022 retirees. Best of luck to all of you in your future endeavors.
Okay, I'd like to add something there.
Okay.
I just, we got the seniority report, and I just noted that Marcia was here with us for 13 years, and Leisha was here with us for 33.3 years, and so I would like to acknowledge the devotion and the dedication to our students by those teachers.
Absolutely, much appreciated.
Yes, thank you. Is that a motion?
No.
If it is, I'd second it.
Oh, should I motion that we acknowledge? We don't have to motion it. What Tiff can do is we'll make sure that it gets added to the official board minutes. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda. We have the approval of the May 17, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Did anybody see any corrections that needed to be made? Okay. Next, we are on to treasurers reports. We have June bills and May wires, the May treasurer's bank and bank reconciliation. We have the budget summary and also student activity funds. Did anybody have any questions or good to go?
Yep.
Okay. Next, we have fundraisers, the LO trap team. They would like to do a truffle, excuse me, a shoot slash raffle ticket sale fundraisers. The trap shoot will be August 6, 2022, and the raffle ticket sales will be from July 1st to August 6, 2022, with the drawing on August 6th of 2022. The Washington DC club, excuse me, the Washington DC, yeah, DC club, they would like to offer summer concessions at the baseball games and summer rec activities we have over at the ballpark for the concession stand. Next, we have donations. Superintendent Becker Johnson, $25 to the Flexible Learning Center Initiative. Alter Metal has $383 donation to the LO trap team. The first of the new donations that were added is from Lifetime Fitness, Matt Nod and Dana and Carrie Olson family for new weight room equipment valued at $27,000. And we also have added Suites Hotel for hosting the LO volleyball fundraiser night. The LO volleyball team raised almost $1,500 to go for their student activity account. Any questions? Personnel, first, we have the approval of resignation of Leanne Reese as the Community Education Director effective May 31st of 2020. We will also look to approve the hiring of Stacy Jacobson as the Cardinal Kids Cardinal Care Director effective June 1st, 2020, at a rate of 16:40 an hour. We will also look for the approval of hiring Sean Kennedy as the middle school, high school, excuse me, middle school science teacher for the 2022-23 school year. He will be at a Step 17 Lane of a Masters at a salary total of $71,981. We will also look for the approval of the hiring of Madeline Huntley as a Cardinal Care Student Worker effective May 27th at a rate of $9 an hour. We are looking for the approval of the resignation of Tanner Olson as a pool student worker effective June 1st, 2020. The approval of the hiring of Carter Sweeney as a pool student worker effective June 1st, 2020 at $9 an hour. I'm sorry, 2022, thank you. Approval of the hiring of Benita Nold as a pool student worker effective June 1st, 2020 at $9 an hour. Sorry, 2022, there's too many numbers in here.
Yep.
Okay, so the hiring of Camden Huntley, Camden Hungerhold, jeepers, as a pool student worker effective June 1st at $9 an hour. The hiring of Lyndon O'Byrne as a pool student worker effective January 1st at $9 an hour.
June.
June. There's too many numbers in here, I'm sorry, guys. Yes, June. The approval of the hiring of Jacob Payne as a pool student worker and also a summer rec student coach effective June 1st at $9 an hour. The approval of the hiring of Leanne Reese as the summer rec coordinator and secretary effective June 1st at a stipend of $1,000. The hiring of Spencer Gooddale as a summer rec student coach effective June 1st at $9 an hour. The approval of hiring Cadence Hanson as a summer rec student coach effective June 1st at $9 an hour. The approval of hiring John Stockdale for the summer rec coach, which would be beginning baseball, Pee-wee baseball, and T-ball, effective June 1st as a stipend of $1,200. We are going to also look at approving the hiring of Chrissy Schuman and Mel Lunning as co-advisors for the One Act Play effective July 1st. They will each receive $450 as a stipend. We will also look at the approving of hiring Kelly Masters as the Assistant Junior High Football Coach effective July 1st at $2,459. And we will also look at approving the hiring of Sean Kennedy as a volunteer football coach. That is a lot. Does anybody have any questions or anything they see that needs to be corrected, other than my missing dates?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion by Dave. Second by Cassidy. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to discussion and action items. Policy review, first readings are 524 Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policy, 516 Student Medication, 517 Student Recruiting, 518 DNR/DNI Orders, 519 Interviews of Students by Outside Agencies, and 521 Student Disability Nondiscrimination, and there is a form with that one. The policy committee didn't have any changes to any of them. Under 117, it says the board is supposed to adopt a resolution for incoming students and open-enroll students. As you guys noticed down the further agenda later in the meeting, we'll look for a motion to accept the MDE form when it comes to having open-enroll students come in. Otherwise, there was no changes to any wording or anything within the first reading policies.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policies, 524, 516, 517, 518, 519, and 521.
I have a motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Pat. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to the second reading policies. 515 Protection and Privacy of Student-Pupil Records, 522 Student Sex Nondiscrimination, 616 Student District Systems Accountability, and 806 Crisis Management and Form. We didn't have any changes to these, but like we said last month, we will be bringing 616 back in July to address the advisory councils and those types of things we have to make sure we're compliant with state statutes for world's best workforce and such. But otherwise, there was nothing to the policy itself that will be changed.
I make a motion, we approve the second reading of policies, 515, 522, 616, and 806.
Okay, I have a motion by Deb.
I'll second.
Second by Cassidy. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the discussion and approval of the 2022-23 LTFM budget, so I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
Got it. All right, folks, I sent you quite a bit of data over the past year on this, and a lot of this also has to do with Tim and Cass and Dave being a part of our Building and Grounds Committee, so we can thank them for all their help with this, too. Anyway, so before the next fiscal school year starts, which is July 1, I need to send this assurance of compliance up to MDE stating to them that the forms that you guys received, all those beautiful colored spreadsheets, are true to form, meaning we want to use our long-term facilities dollars to better our buildings, our grounds, things like that. All of you are well-versed in LTFM, I don't need to, you know, explain it to any of you, you are great about it, but a couple of things I just want to point out. The majority of this budget for next year, now again, next year, at this time again, in June, you'll be receiving the same documents, so I'm just going to talk about next year's budget. That's mainly going to focus on our LED lighting project. You guys may recall a few months ago, we approved that and all that, so a lot of that dollar is going to be found in this. Now, keep in mind, when we did that project, we already got approval also from MDE with it, so essentially, your LTFM is going to be approved. I'm pretty 99% sure. When it's MDE, you know, you can't be 100%. One thing, though, that I'm doing research on, and I will continue to research this, but I will send it off to the board, if you look at your first row, I know it's hard to see folks back there, I apologize, it's on our website, but it's the 2022 base year, so that base year, we take from years prior and try to figure out our budget, okay? If you looked out, and Deb and I kind of giggled about this because we're both kind of new in terms of this LTFM budget for this particular district, we would like to know, and please don't comment tonight, but email me if you know, we're wondering what the other hazardous materials are from years past that would have a budget of $12,000. Now, as you can see, we've changed that because right now, we're not going to have that, we don't believe, because that's a lot of money that was sitting there, and we don't know what was used, so there's no documents in the district office to tell me, so I'm going to keep looking, I might have to dig deeper or call MDE on that, so I'm just kind of requesting, if you guys have any information, please email me, and I'll, or give me a suggestion where to look, that's fine, too. So that's one thing I wanted to point out, Deb and I kind of giggled about it both, like we have no idea, so we thought we'd bring it up to everybody to say, nobody knows, nobody knows. Otherwise, again, like I said, this is kind of also, as Chrissy was telling you last month, this is kind of a moving target, too. We get to move the monies around within this. If we know that, hey, another big project is coming, we can reach out to MDE and say, hey, we need to do this, this is something really bad happening in our district, we contact them, and we go through this same process, where I will come forward to the board asking for your approval. So tonight, once it is approved, I will be faxing it right off to MDE, so, just so it's out of our books and into theirs.
Jen, is there a reason that, like, this year is like 164, then next year it drops down to like 109, then back up to 114, do you know?
It's, while we want to be ethical with our numbers, we know that our LED project is not going to go over X amount, and she know, well, MDE knows, if we go over that, then we're kind of playing with our budget a little too much, you know, these are very, we're trying to be as specific as we can, and have some cushion in there with the LED project, right? But we don't want to exhaust it, so it's like, oh, we want all this money, knowing full well, we won't use it, they're going to ding us. So we want to be as close as we can, but that's a great question.
Okay.
Yep, really good question. If there are changes, like I said before, I will definitely bring it forward, or if, of course, MDE would suggest anything, you guys get to know, the Building and Grounds Committee gets to know, they will get to see this as well. I don't bring it forward to them first because I need approval from you first. But, and I should say this, too, I need to thank the board for allowing me to do stuff with your building and grounds. I mean, it's been great, and, I don't know, I think our kids are benefiting, all of you are benefiting, we're making some changes, so thank you for that, and thank you for allowing me to use your LTFM dollars and dig deeper into it and figure it out for you, so we'll keep moving forward.
That's needed, eh?
Yeah. And we do have a Building and Grounds meeting, just so the committee knows, in July, at some point, I think it's on your agenda.
Yeah, it was on there.
Was it? Okay. And we'll be discussing this there.
And you said also that this does have flexibility if a big issue comes up.
Let's say a big issue would come up, and we didn't budget enough, we would contact MDE and ask for reapproval.
Okay.
So what they would do is say, you know, we can go back to your board, though.
Yeah.
Make sure you can reapprove this LTFM or whatever it is.
Right.
You know, whatever the project is. Once I get your approval, I'd have to do another reassurances, my signature to send up there.
Okay.
Yes, it would kind of basically start all over.
Yeah.
But that's easy, we can do that.
Yep.
The hard part is the talking through the budget with MTE of where things are going to go. That's the hard part, but, I mean, it's expected, yeah.
Does anybody have any further questions? If not, we would look for a motion and a second to approve.
I move we approve.
Okay. Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Pat. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have discussion and possible approval of addition of a second section of kindergarten for the school year of 22-23, and I'll turn it back over to Jen and Erin.
All right, well, I can start it off, just today, I emailed Leanne to make sure my numbers were right, and we haven't, of course, officially received every enrollment form. We also count those who come in and say, we are enrolling, and they take the form and they're ready to enroll, we just don't have it in our hands. But we're expecting 28 kindergarteners, three of these will also be part of the cards program. We love coming forward, as many of you do, too, to say, hey, our enrollment continues to grow, so we're pretty happy about it, you know, but when you're in those, and Deb, feel free to jump into, because you're elementary. When you have high numbers of elementary classes, there tends to be a dishonor, in fact, of maybe not hitting all the instructional and curricular areas you need to, because then it becomes more of a student management issue than an instructional issue. No doubt, it's instruction, no doubt, but that gets kind of pushed on the wayside. Now, again, these numbers that I'm sharing with you, we don't know numbers such as IEP ratios, or even ages vary, if you are an old kindergartner versus a young kindergartner, it's a significant difference, Deb, right? You've probably seen that.
Yep.
So, anyway, for me, I mean, I'm so happy to come forward to you, but I'm going to give it off to Erin, but just, I want you to just think of the big picture of instruction versus student management, and where the priority lies. I mean, we got to do both at all times, but our instruction and quality of instruction needs to be our priority. I'm going to say that.
Well, like I said, without, you know, the number's 25 in the classroom full-time, we don't know the status of the other three, if they're push-in, pull-in, part-time, whatever, the ones that'd be part of the cards program. I don't know if it's just something where, I don't know what the magic number is, you know, like Deb knows, they're at different levels, we don't know that until we get them in there, you know, you have behaviors, you have this, you have young, younger, older, so I think it's more of the discussion of, is there a magic number, is it up to us, do you guys just give approval if we get up to 28 and three, that we, you know, pulse for another position, or is, I mean, I don't know what that number, I think we, you know, last class we did this was the, this year's eighth grade going into ninth grade, and that was always around that 30 mark, and they were good the whole way through. You know, and we took it year by year, but kind of what happened was that person has to kind of follow them, you know, I think, I think that was one of Carrie Lowe's first jobs, and then Deb left, she did that, and then I think Chrissy took over, if I'm getting old, I might, I think that's right, Chrissy took over and did a couple of years, and then fourth grade opened, so that's kind of how we did it in the past, is about that 30 mark, but like I said, I don't know what the magic.
Right, no numbers, what?
25 and three, so 28 total, there's 25 in the classroom, three that are, you know.
Could possibly be in and out depending on an IEP.
Right.
So are you thinking that the two sections we need to carry through next year following year?
Well, you know, it depends, I mean.
Right, everything is kind of.
If it would maintain enrollment, so if we'd maintain that 28, let's say, then we would suggest they continue what you guys have already practiced here, where the teacher, I should say, the class is split, teachers keep staying, you know, but if our enrollment were dropped, that would be a cut.
So the teacher would.
It would become one section again.
There'd be the understanding of the person, it would be a year-to-year basis on enrollment. Luckily, we do have the space, we still have that classroom on the end of the, so space is not an issue. I don't know what else, you know, we've done it before, and we didn't really need to add other than the teacher and the room, I think we'd be fine, so like I said, I don't know what that magic number is, what your guys' thoughts are, you know, Tanya knows the kids the best, is it something where, maybe with her, I mean, I don't know what they, what you guys want to see.
The magic number kind of depends on the kids, really.
Yeah, sometimes a number isn't a really good indication either.
If we're going to err on either side, we need to get the numbers of our kindergartners lower. 25 five-year-olds.
Okay, do I need to say more than that?
No, I did 20-some kids for a five-year-old birthday party, and it was, I mean.
It is critical, it is critical at this stage that they get the basis of their phone, they got to get their letters in, they got to get their, they need to get this material as little ones, it's critical. And if you're trying to manage that many little bodies, it is very difficult to really know, you know, like, it's important to have time one-on-one with a teacher every day, that you make contact with that student, that you can work with these three kids and these three kids, and if you have 25, you know, I've taught 25 kids in a first-grade classroom, and it is all you can do all day long to manage it, and, you know, kindergartners are that much younger, and I think that, I think that it is critical that we keep that number as low as we financially can in order to give our kids the best start, and I think.
Well, some of them can be almost a year younger than others in class, too.
Exactly, exactly.
So how did we, so this last year's eighth grade class, how did we do that when they were in kindergarten?
I believe we hired Trevor, I believe that's the first year Trevor came, Trevor and Sam.
Oh, he's shaking his head behind you.
No?
Oh. So I think we just split them.
Talon's class had 30-some in it.
Yeah, that was one that was split.
Yeah, so they were the last year's eighth graders.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
They're going to be freshmen, so that's, so we started splitting them in kindergarten.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, and they had, what, 31?
They were 30, yeah, they were a little bit, almost 35 by the, I mean, they've gained, they've gained and then cut, but they've hung around that 30, 31.
You know, I think that it's also really important that it's something we evaluate year-to-year, and that the teacher that's hired understands that this is for this year, and then to balance it out, you know, and maybe the first three years, they're split, and then when they have more skills as little independent students, you might be able to have 24, 25 together versus when they're little, so I think it has to be something we have to look at each year.
Yeah, and you see a lot of the class size reduction up to third grade, it's pretty common.
Yeah. Would we then offer said teacher their own contract that would mirror, I mean, because I'm, you know, if they have other correct licensure, that would mirror the LOEA contract, but theirs would be stipulated that'd be a year-to-year basis?
I think we still have to go through LOEA.
Would it still go under LOEA?
Because really, regardless if they're, if they come in as a tenured teacher, they have one year to be tenured.
Yep.
If they're a non-tenured teacher, they have those three years.
Yep.
So regardless, we do have that one year anyway, and that's what we'd use.
And then they would be bottom of seniority, so then let's say we kept it for two years, they get tenured.
We had to do the reduction because the class size fell, then it would be.
They would be the first.
And, do you guys recall this? The half-million-dollar grant I got, that has, now, remember that the narrative opens in July, I told you that last month, so I'm going to relook at it, see how I can play with it some more, we, of course, were on a time crunch when we did it, but I am thinking, and don't quote me on this, but we may have some class reduction narratives I could pull from those dollars, too. Now, I'm not totally sure on that, but I recall something, and I think I already wrote it in there, but let me make sure, but I'll let you know, but either, I mean, our budget can handle it, but we also may have COVID dollars, maybe.
And then my further question, if we, this is not up to us to decide this, but would the current staff be offered that, you know, they wouldn't want that because it's just a one-year, never mind. Asked and answered.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're going to ask, but I think if it's a one-year, because then they'd move in.
They're going to want it, right, that's, that's, that's what I think, too.
I want it, too.
Maybe I'm a dehumanifier, so I can hear a little better.
Oh, there you go.
Well, I have to agree with Deb, kids that age, you have to be able to have the one-on-one time with the teacher, there's, there's no way around it, so.
Do you guys want to cap it to say, hey, Jen and Erin, if it goes under 25, this resolution isn't going to pass, you can do that, or if it doesn't.
It's all subjective, I would leave it up to you guys to make my call.
And we would report out, I could do that to you.
We just approve that we would, we would authorize splitting the class as far as the budget goes, and the management duties are really up to you guys.
How many, was there 19 first graders this year, I think?
19 or 20.
There was 19 or 20, I know Mitchell had a class last year as a kindergartner, and that was, that was tough.
Yeah.
I will update you regularly, you know, every couple of weeks on my emails, if things should change, or numbers or anything significant I would see, just say, folks, uh, this isn't good, we need a third kindergarten, maybe, what if?
I move that we authorize the, splitting the kindergarten with the, what do I want to say, no magic number.
No discretion of the.
Under the discretion of the administration.
Maybe.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, perfect.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dave, second by Pat. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Talk to you later, I'll give you a magic number.
Aye.
Depending on the year of your service. I haven't called for that yet. It was lower.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have discussion and possible approval of Medica as ISD 499 Health Insurance Company. I will hand this back over to Jen.
I don't want it, I'm going to hold back. This has been hard, folks. Y'all know with the economy and everything else, I suppose we could have assumed, which we did, insurance rates would go up. I surely did not assume it to go up this much. You've received numerous emails from me, and I'm sorry about that, but I wanted to beat it to the punch. We've met with our teaching staff and our non-certified staff, of course, to disclose all information that we have. Unfortunately, we can't make the decision on how our insurance rates go up and down. Y'all received this in various emails, and what the district has decided, and the biggest reason why we are deciding on Medica tonight is because it is comprehensive in terms of where people can doctor. We have staff members at Doctor in Minnesota, and we also have staff members at Doctor in Iowa. If we would have continued with Blue Cross Blue Shield into our next session, Iowa folks would not be covered as well, and it would have been kind of a fiscal and financial nightmare for those families. So we wanted a comprehensive view of how every single one of our employees will be impacted as fairly as we could. I would suggest Christie and I probably put in 67, 60 to 70 hours just to make sure that we are offering all of you the best possible package that we can give to our staff. We made phone calls and sat in on humorous webinars, and we both have quite a vocabulary. Now, she's much better at it than I am, but, yeah, I don't want to go into insurance. I wouldn't recommend it to anybody else. It's pretty tough stuff. But I do recommend Medica. I have some skin in the game, too. My insurance rates go up, but it is, in terms of our staff, every single staff member, it's fair.
Is there any other questions? If not, we would look for a motion and a second to approve Medica.
I'll make a motion to approve Medica as our health insurance company.
Motion by Pat.
I'll second that.
Second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to the discussion and possible approval of the employee handbook for the 22-23 school year.
Hey, folks, what I'd like to do, if we can make this a second read, or a first reading, if I could first ask that, just because I saw a couple little tweaks that I want to make, a little bit more, just like language pieces that need to be a little bit more equitable or equal in terms of throughout the handbook. So it's a little bit more, how do I even say this?
Consistent.
Consistent is the word I'm looking for, thank you. It's been a long day. I'm saying like Teresa's.
Should we table that, then, for next month?
As I say, we could just table it instead.
You can table it, that's fine, too, either way.
Just table it and look at bringing back the handbook next month with the corrections.
Because there'll be other handbooks with it, too.
Yep.
But if that's all right, I just want to be more consistent with, especially in the disciplinary piece, and then there's just a couple, you know, spelling things that are not a big deal, but I just want to clean it up for you.
Okay, so if you guys are okay with that, we'll look for a motion to table to have it brought back in July.
So I move.
Okay, motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have discussion and possible approval for the 2022-2023 Resolution for Membership into the Minnesota State High School League.
All right, tonight I'm asking the board to approve this document basically saying, yes, we want to be part of the Minnesota State High School League again. In your emails, the last few months, I've sent you the fees associated with this. The fees don't need any approval, it's just your approval as our school district school board that you want to be part of the league. And then Pat has signed it, I sign it, I send it on. That's it. It has to be in before July 31st.
I move we rejoin the State High School League.
Okay, I have a motion by Dave, second by Deb. Any further discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have the approval of the Minnesota Department of Education Student Open Enrollment Form. Like I said, this one goes back to Policy 517. We're supposed to have some type of standard for our open-enroll students in how they can come and go. Like Jen had said, when I talked to her this past week, a lot of the schools just use MDE as their one form, and they're open-enroll students.
This might be a dumb question, but why would we approve something that's already part of the MDE thing?
Because 517, Policy 517, we approved tonight, so the school board has to have a resolution on the form when it comes to open-enroll students. We have to have.
So we're just assuming that we're adding this form to our policy?
Pretty much, we're setting this.
Like I said, just, maybe just a dumb question, but.
No, we, we have to say as a board what we are going to use for our open-enroll kids, and we haven't done that. So this just, make sure that we're in compliance with Policy 517.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Minnesota Department of Education Student Open Enrollment Form.
I have a motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Pat. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of Thatcher Pool and Spa additional parts for the pool spa. We originally approved $6,792.70 of February 2020. The quote has now changed to $8,859.32.
And I now know why. In digging deeper and in talking with Mrs. Milks, this is what happened. The first quote, they quoted a small filter that was, could withstand about 75 gallons per minute. With our pool size and digging deeper into the pipes and everything, we are now up to 90 gallons per minute. Thatcher Pool and Spa said, if we put in the small filter, we will be back next year, and we will give you the same quote. So needless to say, we are having a bigger filter, and it'll last longer because the, how big it is and the amount of flowage we have. So there you go. Sorry I didn't get this to you sooner. Got it today. And this is going to come out of our pool? Yes, yes. Okay? Thank you, yep.
So the work is done, right?
The work is done, yes, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Thatcher Pool and Spa.
Okay, I have a motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the addition, we have 9J, which would be. Excuse me, sorry.
Yeah.
Yep. The approval of the hiring of Kelly Masters as Student Services Advisor for the school year of 22-23 for the amount of $40,000 at 260 days.
Okay, I'll begin this discussion. I feel that this position was originally structured to cover substitutes and good quality coverage in our classrooms if our teacher has to be gone. And the purpose of this position that was previously Mel was about substitute teaching, making sure our classes were covered by somebody. And we have right in here the requirements of a short-call substitute license and a certificate in teaching or a substitute license, substitute teaching, excuse me. And I feel that it is important that this position has someone in it that has a teaching license. That's how I'm going to begin the conversation.
I agree, a teaching license is needed, especially, or something of a teaching license is needed, especially since they could be subbing all the way from pre-K up to classes through senior year.
I would say just the initial creation of this position was not to have on the teacher salary, to have the sub-license and not a teacher license. Hence, kind of, we're not going to get some of the teacher's license, it'll be very difficult.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, the initial conversation was a sub-license, at least, and then the position was going to grow from there.
Okay.
What does it take to acquire a sub-license?
There are four different ways you can get a sub-license. You can have a four-year degree, you can be enrolled in a teaching program, or you can use your work experience in CTE, technical, or technical areas, which, business, I have it in here, it's, if you work in agriculture, business, family, consumer science, communications, construction, manufacturing, medical, creative, early childhood, hospitality, transportation, or work-based learning, you could, there's a third way to qualify for a sub-license.
And I think the fourth, so correct me if I'm wrong, is, is local need. We can determine if a sub is needed, meaning we have to submit the forms. I believe that's the fourth. Could we run that? I haven't done this for a while for subbing, but I'm pretty sure that's the fourth.
So what you're saying, basically having experience working in business?
Ag, business.
I'm an ag, I'm an ag. I could be a substitute teacher?
Yes. I mean, we would have to submit forms on you. MDE is the ultimate approval of licensure, you know?
Yeah.
But we're, we're in, you know, we all know the nation with teaching right now, so I'm confident they would approve you, Dave, as a sub. I'm not saying we would. MDE would.
So this would be a tier-one position, then?
Yes.
So a tier-one position needs a separate contract?
Yes.
Which we don't have.
It would be the same contract that.
We didn't have a contract before.
Whatever Mel's was.
We don't have one.
We don't have one.
We don't have a copy of the contract.
Right, there's nothing, we'd have to, meaning her salary, her FICA, all of that would be the same. And then the days we don't have.
I can't, for me, I can't hire someone that needs a contract without having a contract to look at.
Yeah, we have nothing on that one.
We don't have a contract technically to even approve.
No.
And looking at, you know.
Tier ones do not, they're not on the bargaining unit, they're not on that language. It says it right on the, right on the licensure.
Right. And Kelly, I know you're sitting here, okay? And I respect you as a person, I think very highly of you, okay? And coaching and all those things. But we need, in this position, someone, when a teacher in any area gets a phone call that their child is sick and they have to go home, we have, we need someone who can competently go in and cover. And in my opinion, there has to be someone with some educational background if we're going to be having them going in and teaching. And I know that sometimes it becomes a long-term thing. It can happen. It has happened. And with this, this has only been open for four weeks. I don't really feel like we've explored, it has never been in the newspaper, you know, have we really explored if there is somebody who has some teaching sub-license, some teaching experience that can fulfill that role in our school? Because otherwise, I don't understand why we have that position.
As a parent, I, my, I afford kids in the school, and there was a pair that was running classrooms more than there was one set, so.
Right.
So we all, so we all know.
So, but what are you saying by saying that?
That a paraprofessional qualifies. I mean, I'm not going one way or the other, I'm saying we can throw a pair in to teach a class.
And they've had training, and they've passed tests.
Do they have a sub-license?
They don't have a sub-license, but they have training, and they also have passed the test to be a paraprofessional. So they do have qualifications, so, okay?
So if we, excuse me, so if we don't have somebody in that position with the, the lack of subs around, what do we do?
Teachers on call, if, if they're available.
We didn't get anybody this year. We just don't hope to get anybody.
And Kelly, you get that, same thing, it'd be a higher tier on teachers on call. And Mel and Mitch Schmitz, that have experience with being a classroom hire, too. I'm a teacher, I'm just saying that I don't think that that's a qualification to get it.
So I think the bigger discussion that this is going to bring is we all know about shortage, worker shortage in about every field, so teaching is the same way. So for me, what do we want to do proactively as a school district to get ahead of some of the others, to get people here, to get our, to keep our kids above, to keep going? What are we going to have to do? Because right now, if you look, how many teachers did we just move around, and how many of them have the proper licensure, need to get the proper licensure, are going back? In the past, in the science department, we had somebody that was a science teacher, and they were, yep, I'll go back, I'll go back. So we spun our wheels basically for three years, thinking they were going to go back and get this endorsement, and then they didn't, and they moved on. So we were no further ahead in three years, given our kids a core subject education. So that, that's part of the conversation. What is everybody, as far as your expectations, what do you want? You know, how many people do we want in our school trying to get an endorsement or not have a license, be a tier-one, teaching kids?
I think the discussion, I think the discussion ends up going down to, do we want somebody in the classroom or not? I mean, that's where we were with your science a few years ago. We had somebody teaching science that didn't have any education in science, just because there was no science teacher. That's just an example. So we're going to get to the point where, do we want somebody, or don't we?
But are we at that point?
Yeah, are we at that point after a few weeks?
The job was posted on May 16th. I had emailed.
I didn't say we're at that point. We might be, but we got to know that if we don't fill this position, what are we going to do?
But then that's where it comes back to your expectations. What are you okay with the kids learning? Am I okay with?
This is a sub we're talking about, we're not talking about a classroom teacher.
So a sub doesn't teach, though?
Not very often.
They absolutely do. They do.
If a sub.
I have some, some teachers.
Well, if you get long-term, yes. If you get one day, the teacher has instruction on what they're going to do.
And they have to.
I've been a student before.
Short call can go to 14 days, so that's two weeks.
What?
Short call can go up to 14 days.
Up to 14 days.
And they have to go long-term, so you're going to have to pay two weeks teaching your kids.
Yeah, so you want kids sitting in the classroom, not, what do you, again, it goes back to your expectations. I have three kids in this district.
If somebody mentioned back here, then, then it would be a pair-up, so.
But again, that's an expectation, too.
Do we, what, what does, what does everybody want? Are they happy? What do we, what do we want? We got to get out of this. Yeah, we can't, we can't sit here and, like I say, we spun our wheels for three years on the, on the, the one staff member, and we were no further ahead after three years. So how many of these, how many of these, they used to be called variances, now they've changed, but how many is everybody comfortable with? I mean, how many are you comfortable with in your building? Or are we going to have to work proactively, like some of the other districts, to try and get licensed staff? What are our options? I don't know, COVID, you know, COVID, what are our options? Sign-on bonus? I mean, I'm not going to say we've exhausted our options, so it's just a matter of expectation. So it's just a matter of expectation. Having three kids in here, and one that's going to be a senior, we've, we've had some issues, and so have some other parents, not major. But when you look at the next level, going to college, and they have no, you know, foreign language, they struggle with their core subjects, well, that's, you know, so what, what can we do to get that better? What can we do? So again, it's from core subjects to sub. But to say a sub isn't valuable at teaching, I mean, I don't agree with that.
If that's what you thought I said, that's not what I meant. I mean, it might have come out wrong, but that's not what I meant.
Can I say that I do have a theory, and I have a teacher here, that I'm licensed K-6, guys, I can't go teach grad writer science class. I can't teach Perry Olson's upper math class. Same type of your high school teacher themselves will come down to the elementary. There is a difference in, in those departments. So just because I'm yourself and I have a degree, doesn't mean I, you want me teaching grad writers, science, I don't know.
No, but you know how to run a classroom, you know how to run a classroom.
I know how to run a classroom, I agree with you. I do. But at the same time, when you do those sort of things, we're getting Google Classroom, we're getting worksheets, because I can't go teach that stuff. I don't know it. I don't know how to farm, how to let people farm. I can't change my own oil. I can't get, to get oil changed. I can act it, doesn't mean it's going to be right either. So I'm just saying that unless you can find somebody that teaches K through six, has a science degree, English degree, and all these degrees, math degree, you're not going to find somebody qualified in there to do every single form of education. You know what I mean?
But they're going to have classroom skills, and they're going to understand the teaching process.
And I'm not going to dwell on what we can't, what we'll never get either.
And, and I guess one of my, I think one of the things I wanted, I wanted to say is that I do not feel that this has been adequately advertised. I do not feel we have had an adequate length of time. I didn't see it in the newspaper. It isn't anywhere in like the Filmer County Journal. You know, there may be a retired teacher, there may be, it hasn't, the only place it's been that I know of, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the only place that I know that it was on was Ed Post. But if it's in the newspaper, if it's on our website, if it's at the Maur County, or the Filmer County Journal, we tap, we get people from those areas to come to our school. So I just don't feel that we have looked adequately to find someone who could fill this position with a little more expertise. And I think that it's too soon to make a decision.
I have to agree with Deb. I mean, we posted this position on May 19th, and, you know, Jen, I contacted you on Monday, the 6th, and asked how the interviews went for the previous Friday, and they had already selected a candidate. So I mean, that was less than, what, a little over two weeks is all we truly looked? And, you know, the requirements set forth for this job were not set by the board, they were set by administration. So my question is, is if the administration set these requirements, why are they bringing someone forward who doesn't have the requirements set forth by the administration?
And we don't have a contract.
And we also don't have a contract to see, to be able to approve.
Right. Can I just talk about the contract quick? Being the prior position, do you guys recall anything related to that?
It was a one-year deal, and then we never saw a contract after that.
Because there's no contract in that particular...
Correct. We, we did have a, correct, it was a one-year sub intern, the first year, and I think it was made in April of 2020? Because we were online when it came through. It was April, I mean, of 2020, when we approved this, and it was, yep, for a one-year. And the, the goal was to have someone who was, you know, qualified to, yes, fill in when a teacher is gone, for say, a day, or multiple days. You know, I look at this past spring, you know, when one of our staff members was out for over a month, you know, our sub at that time filled in and pretty much had to teach the kids while our staff member was out. And that's where I agree with Deb, that there, there's going to be times, I mean, what are we going to do? If we don't have somebody that has the short-call sub-licence, we're going to have to go to teachers on call and hire a long-term sub anyways. So are we really gaining anything without having the correct requirements?
And we did that position, too, to alleviate some of the problems we're having with teacher on call and the shortage.
Yep.
So I mean, there was multiple reasons.
And I would say the requirements is, is the candidate can get a short-call sub-licence, so I would say the requirements could be filled.
But they aren't right now.
No, but we could.
Does that position fall under that new handbook that you just did, or no?
No. But it could be. You know, we can have those conversations with our, our committees. It easily could, or if MSEA...
It would be an at-will position, because...
Or at-will, yeah, because currently it's at-will.
Yeah.
It's an individual contract, so. Just throwing this out for consideration, just to talk about. I love that we can talk about this. What you could consider, or we would consider as administrators, would to say, you know, that position, or, i.e. Kelly, we're talking about Kelly tonight, he would not become a sub. He would not. Instead, he would do the other duties, and we'd force the subbing on the other position, which is Trevor's. So he would be our sole substitute teacher. He's licensed, he's experienced, we could do that. You know, just to talk about this, not to say we're going to do it or anything, nothing like that. But I just want you to know, we can move these duties, because we did that throughout the year. We move duties all the time, like attendance duties, you know, managing that, or transcript reviews, things like that. You know, who can attend a certain meeting and who can't? You know, they, they're switching duties all the time, but that's just a consideration for you as well, just to think about. I mean, because I, I agree with him, we want the very best people in the very best positions, so they won't fail either. You know, we are never going to set anybody up to fail, that's for sure. There will be, if you would approve this position tonight, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Masters, tonight, I can guarantee you this, because you know me, there will be development, staff development, in any way, shape, or form you can think of. M.D., I will give him credit for that. They do have good webinars in certain areas. The state EA has a really good webinar in terms of kind of supporting new teachers. Debbie may have seen that, I'm not sure, but they do a good job, too. So there are those opportunities, and you should expect that stuff from Erin and I, regardless of tonight's conversation. You should always expect that from us anyway, with our new staff. You know, we have a new teacher in elementary that she's never taught before. You should expect, this is her first time out of the gate, ever, in an elementary classroom. Kind of scary, we just talked about how scary it is in there. You can be rest assured, we are going to educate her, not only in our ways as ISD 499, but as experienced teachers ourselves, what we believe would help her achieve her goal of being a successful educator here. You know, so that's just one other example of a teacher who isn't experienced, but we are prioritizing her to get professional development, that we believe is best for her, and our kids, of course, because it trickles down.
Well, what would we like to do?
Need a contract first, I guess.
Correct. We don't even, yeah, we don't even have a contract to approve.
I can create one, based off kind of the non-affiliated and MSEA, well, and also our individual contracts, because we have a couple folks who have individual contracts. We can look at that, and then I can bring it forward to review.
So if that's going to be the case, and the substitute teaching is part that removed, that means the option for insurance that references the master contract for the LOEA, the sick days, other union benefits for LOEA, those will go away as well?
Are you talking about Trevor's position?
No.
No. If we hire the Student Services Center assistant, and we remove the substitute part from this job...
Okay, I'm with you now.
Yep, that...
That's something to consider, I guess. I mean, I can put it all in.
I would say it would...
And we can negotiate it in or out.
Well, it's an entry-level position.
Teaching, they shouldn't follow the teacher's schedules, because they're not teaching.
No, I would not go off the teacher's schedule, because it's our license.
Or even their insurance, or benefits, or all of that, because if there's...
It would be the other, the two, the, the non-affiliated, the non-certified union, and our individual contracts.
It's like another market, essentially.
So, correct, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, if there is, if this position ends up being where there is no true subbing, which was the intent of the position to begin with, for me, I don't think that they should receive the benefits as our licensed teachers do, based on their contract.
Can I throw this out to you? I would like to see somebody who, who hasn't been in a classroom to try it for like an hour. You know, with, of course, guidance. I, I don't want to ever throw anybody to the wolves, because it is. But I would like to see, you know, this is what you can expect in a classroom. We'd like your assessment of it. We'd also like to give pointers, whatever, because that's going to happen the first day of school for our, our kindergarten teacher, or, not kindergarten, fourth grade.
Third grade.
Third grade.
Yeah, but she has a licence.
She does have a licence.
She's been through student teaching.
She's been through the pedagogy, all that. But it's fun to see how, you know, they react, you know? But again, I'm a big believer in development.
I would just also like to say that I do not know when exactly this title became Student Service Center's Assistant. And if it is not about subbing, then I do not understand why we need an assistant. Period.
Sure.
If it's not about subbing and educating our kids, I don't know why the Student Services needs an assistant.
And currently, you're all right. It has it in there. You know, we're, we're not changing it yet.
What? We're not changing it? But I mean, like, why are we having this position? Student Services Center Assistant? If that person's primary thing is not subbing? I don't understand, because we, why would the Student Service Center need an assistant?
Deb, can I ask you where you see the assistant?
It's right at the top, 1.0 Student Services Assistant, right off the top with the job.
No, it's right here.
With the job posting.
And if, if the primary purpose of that is not subbing and making sure that our classes are covered, then I do not see a point in having an assistant at all. I think hers...
I don't think that position's been changed yet. I mean, that's a totally different position that you're talking about, in my mind.
What do you mean?
This was the position that was brought forward to us.
Yeah, if, if it's somebody that's not going to do any subbing, then that's a totally different position, as Teresa was talking about, not making it part of the benefits and all that, so...
But I don't see the point of having this if the person's not going to sub.
Correct.
Oh, okay. Okay.
But that, that hasn't been changed to a person that's not going to sub yet. We're just not approving this particular person right now.
Okay, right, right, yeah. I mean, basically, you are saying, though, that if you give the subbing order to Trevor, that you're approving this position?
No, that was just hypothetical. If that's something we want to talk about, we surely can. It's something to talk about, or we could talk about, but it's like, we could be creating...
I just said that would be, we'd have to revamp a lot of things if that's, if that's the direction.
Well, I think that's a good thing to do, then.
So, well...
Because, I mean, I think that we have, you know, here it says here, meet with the juniors and seniors. I thought that's what Trevor was doing. There's only 18 kids.
Honestly, it would be very nice to have a guidance to help our students with their classes, their future, a lot of things.
And, and I thought that that was a big part of what this Student Services was, was doing. I mean, when I, right, I mean, am I...
Yeah, so it was pitch.
That's how we were explained to with...
But the kids, the kids never, or maybe it's just my kid that was never talked to. I have no idea, but he's never...
And I don't think we need an assistant to do more of that, when we only have, we have such small classes. I mean, we can meet with 17 kids. We can meet with 18 kids.
If we keep growing and adding positions, at what point do we say, well, let's just have a full-time soup, a full-time principal, and a guidance counselor then?
Instead of these other...
Just throwing it out there. You start adding numbers.
True. Anyway.
Good conversation.
I would like to request that... What do I want to request? That we, huh?
Table it.
Table it? I would like to see the administration do a lot more advertising regarding this position.
Deb, if you table it, that means you're tabling Kelly to come forward again.
Oh, I don't want to table it.
Yeah, tabling is, tabling means you're going to table it as it stands, so that exact wording will come back again next month.
No.
Okay, I didn't know where you wanted to go.
What, well, what I want to do is, I want to spend more time trying to find someone who has some, who can be this sub-person. Because if, that to me is why this position exists, because it is hard to get subs, and because sometimes you need a sub for like the last 45 minutes of the day. I'm fine with a paraprofessional coming in and doing that. But sometimes a teacher gets called out after first period. You know, they have a health situation, or something happens. You've got the whole rest of that day. I want to have somebody who can come in and quality, keep the things flowing, knows the kids, the kids know them, you know? Not that Kelly wouldn't get to know the kids, but you have to have some understanding of what it, what it is to be a teacher, and to contain a classroom, and move an education forward, and all those things. So I think, I don't know what to say. I want it, I want to give us more time.
So advertise, must have a licence, or equivalent to...
Short-call substitute licence, are we happy, are we okay with that?
I'd say the...
Depends, what are you, are you, what about long-term subbing? I mean, I, I don't know.
A long-term sub needs a, needs a teacher licence, a regular teacher licence.
Yeah.
So which, if you have a teacher licence, you're probably going to be teaching, so...
Right.
To make it realistic...
You want to get somebody who has a short-term...
At least realistic.
Substitute licence.
I think we need to dig deeper into what the actual roles of each individual specific position is. If that's what you guys are going to, you know, have, apply for, then the board needs to know. Not like you guys haven't given us the information, but I think we're kind of out of the loop a little bit on some of the things, because I was under the impression that everything was good to go, so...
So are they. I thought everything was good to go, too.
No, but I'm just saying, if we're going to do this, I think, just give, give the board the exact information on what you guys are looking for. That's what I'm, that's what I'm...
And that's why I use the word expectations. What's everybody's expectations? You know, what, do we want, you know, do you want me coming into your place of business and doing electrical work with guys that know construction, but they have no electrical background? I mean, there again, what do you, what do you want? At the end of the day, I wouldn't do that, because it'd be a nightmare. So that's what, that's what I say, expect, what are your expectations? You know, do you want licensed people? Do you want, you know, what are your job duties? What's everybody's expectation? Because pretty soon, as teachers retire, if we can't replace them, what are we going to replace them with? What are your expectations? And what are we going to have to do to keep licensed teachers in that core subject, especially core subjects? What are we going to have to do? So everybody needs to think about that, because it's here, it's now, short, we're short.
So Teresa, do we need a motion about this? And then a secondary? Or, I don't know if we really need a motion on what you guys are talking about?
We need, because we're listening to you, we got the kind of directive. We need a motion on whether or not to bring Kelly forward as a Student Services Center Assistant?
Yep.
And then you guys can just take, just take directive from the conversation and discussion of where to move forward and what the board would like to see.
I'm with you. Gotcha. Okay. I wanted to make sure. Thank you. And then that doesn't mean that we can't, they can't bring him forward another time if he gets... If he gets, if he goes online and finds out what he needs to do to get a short-call sub, and meets the other qualifications, it's, it doesn't preclude him from being the person brought forward again, but let's see if we can, you know, get some advertising.
Perfect. Yep. No, that's, yes, even if it's not done tonight, yes, they can bring forward the same candidate again at a later time.
All right.
How many applications was that, was, did, who many, how many people applied for that position?
But we interviewed, we interviewed after 15 days.
I'm just asking them, that's all I want to know.
One.
We had one person, and the position was posted for 15 days.
It's still posted.
It is now, yes. Or continuing, yes.
It's still posted.
Should we put a date on when we're accepting applications?
I would, like, with our, kind of with our teachers thing, you know, we leave it open until filled. And I think, let me double-check it.
And then any, any position tier-one has a one-year contract, and it is posted again, that's fine.
Right.
So everybody's got to have that expectation and understanding as well.
Right.
Right here, the very last sentence, application deadline, open until filled. So... Deb, would you like to make your, you know how to word your motion now?
Um...
Or somebody else?
I would like to make a motion to not approve the hiring of Kelly Masters, Student Services Center Advisory Advisor at this time, and to do further search for the listed qualifications?
Perfect. Yep. Okay, I have a motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to the approval of hiring Trevor Carrier and Kelly Masters as co-community education directors effective July 1st, 2022, with a stipend of $2,096 each. Is that something you'd still be interested in, Kelly?
No. And you've already moved me for football, which I can't do also.
Why?
I can't get off work.
Oh.
I got a football to get off work for basketball.
Okay.
We're too busy during the summer and fall to football.
Okay.
Okay.
So, is, do you guys know if Trevor's willing to take on the position by himself? Or do we, do we like to-
He can come back, let's table.
Maybe we table this one then?
Okay.
And if Kelly-
Table will change.
Well, I can talk to Trevor and see what could be involved with, and if I can do that for hours.
Okay, so we could potentially table this one, let administration talk to Trevor, Kelly, maybe get something worked out. We could always bring it back in July.
Okay, so if we table, we can bring it back?
Yep. It'll be tabled to bring back the wording, just as stated, on the July agenda.
Got it. Yep.
So if that's what we're thinking, I will look for a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table the hiring of Trevor and Kelly as co-community education directors.
I have a motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, we move on to reports, which is the Principal's Report from Mr. Hungold.
Not a lot this month. We're wrapping up this year, reviewing handbooks, which will bring a first reading in July, second reading in August. We did finally get the go-ahead to move into Mayo Clinic building, and also I did get eight brand-new beds from Mayo to replace the old ones donated to us at Mayo Clinic. The only thing is, we got to get up to Rochester and pick those up. So hopefully here in July, we'll get the old weight room cleaned out with all the old stuff, because I got to figure out, do we just throw that stuff? Do we, what do we do with that stuff? Because we are getting some new materials for that. So once that room gets cleaned out, we'll get the CNA stuff set up at Mayo Clinic with the new stuff, and then we will paint and carpet that room, and that'll become the new health classroom slash video room for the, for the teams in the evening. So that'll be an additional room that we're adding. Other than that, not too much, other than, like I said, right now, we're wrapping up a lot of stuff. You know, we're going to have to redo, we'll, I'll bring everything back to you guys. I think you've, you've approved the calendars and all those things, and I'll, I'll resend all that stuff out with calendars, and bell schedules, and committees, advisors, all of those type things that are going on. I do have two companies that we're going to be working with, potentially working with, Vestas and Sky Climber, both wind, wind turbine companies. They want to set up a work study of our, since we started that work study last year. They want to see if they can get seniors to work for them, do an intern, and then hire them right out of high school. They want to do their own training. They don't want the kids to go to get their own schooling or whatever, then come back, because they re-train them anyways. So those are two meetings I've set up for the fall. Sky Climber, I don't think's local. I don't, the guy I talked to is not local, but I think their company must work in the area, since they want to do that, and the Vestas, they, they called, and they're going to, they wanted to pilot a new program with that. So, between that building, the, and that goes out of the Student Service Center, will be the, the work study program, and then tomorrow I have a meeting with, I don't know what group they're called, if it's the EDA or whatever group we're talking about, using our CNA program and filtering our students through, through the LSS Homes in Wildwood, and trying to get more employees for those through our CNA program with potentially a, potentially a financial bonus or something for the kids through a private donor. So, a lot of good things going on for our kids with, with work-related. RCTC, another successful registration year with them after year one, moving into year two. That went much more smoothly than Riverland. They're, they're willing and able to do just about anything we want them to do, and they are very helpful. They do all the college stuff, where Riverland pushed a lot of that stuff off on us, like registration and things like that, which we don't know their systems. So that's a, that's a big positive. RCTC's been a great partner, adding these businesses as partners, and then just kind of always looking for more opportunities for our kiddos, doing what's best for those guys, so. Other than that, just, like I said, I'll, definitely much more information coming in July and August for you guys.
I have one question. I saw a parent posted that we're doing kindergarten. Is that the same, like kindergarten camp for the kids? Is that the same as like the preschool that Tanya is offering? I didn't know if it was different.
It's, it's still the same monies, isn't it?
Yeah.
Still the same monies.
Okay.
I'm using some COVID, too, for curriculum.
Okay, because I knew Tanya was doing something, but I didn't know how that tied in with if that was the same as kindergarten camp or not.
Yep, yep.
Does anybody have any other questions for Erin? Okay, if not, we will move on to Superintendent Report. Jen?
Okay, just a few quick things for you tonight. Thank you to our non-certified contract negotiators, Deb and Tim. After two meetings, we wrapped it up. The information will become, be coming to the board in July pending any errors in the contract, but I'm working on the narrative language pieces. Our business manager is working on the numbers. We're going to come together, share with Deb and Tim. We'll have them review it first before coming to you in July, so, pretty excited about that. Erin and I will continue throughout the summer to do our community videos, too, if, with Axel. If you guys have any suggested subjects you want us to talk about, don't hesitate sending me an email, or Erin, like, hey, talk about this, or talk about that. We'd love to hear from you. Just let us know. And again, with that, too, we're going to start opening it up, so it's live. I don't know when. Sometime, I thought this summer to try it. If it doesn't go well, we won't go live anymore, but we want to try to do that, too. Let's see here. Couple more things. This is a time of year where Erin and I are really digging deep, and he actually threw out a ton of emails today to staff to prepare them, but we are going to start looking at student performance data, and then what kind of tweaks we need to make in terms of curriculum reviews, in terms of teachers in their classrooms, and instructional techniques, things like that. How many more times do we need to get into the classroom? But that, this is our time where Erin and I really sit down and look at that data as it relates to all the programming that we have here. Maybe there's programs that we say, you know what, that did not help our students learn how to read, or, you know, learn how to do math problems. Well, then it's on us to assess that and say, you know what, it's out. We need something new. You know, whatever, but that's our time this summer, so just so you know. Let's see, couple other things. Teresa had asked for the STAR report. Lucky you guys, this is so fun to look at. I think she wants to bore you.
No, I'm just kidding. Give you some type of homework in the summer.
What the STAR report is, is a staff automated reporting. It's a district report, so we have to send it every year to MDE, basically saying, this is the name of the person we are hiring for in this licensed position, okay? If, now, what I did, I decided to make a copy of the MDE front page, and you guys can, you know, go ahead and look at all these links if you so choose, but the biggest thing that I always look for every year is our violation report, and that's on the backside, the last two pages. So we don't have access to a violation report for this upcoming year, because, well, the year hasn't started. We don't know what our violations will be. We'll figure that out in October and November, but as you can see, these two certain people on the violation report don't matter anymore anyway. The top person, he's out of our district, so we don't have to worry, and we knew, though, that we'd be tiered out, because chemistry's hard to find anyway. The other person, she's now licensed in this particular discipline, so you won't see her name on here, but this is a report we look at. Once we get that from the MDE, then we sit and talk to our staff. Hey, are you going to go back to school? We need to tier you at three. We need to tier you at one, whatever it is, but that report helps, helps us to figure out, hey, where we need to tier them, or what we can expect, or the conversation we're going to have. So, anytime you need details on this, just let me know. Then, my last thing is, after, Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong, but I put them in here, six or seven inquiries to Mr. Gary Lee. We finally have an MSBA. So I, I attached my emails to say, yes, I reached out six or seven times to get this to happen. So, anyway, the contract came today?
Yep, and this, MSBA has kind of switched up their model a little bit. They're doing more of, of the beginning sessions online, and doing, you know, the final session will be done in person. I am going through SMECs right now, and ours would take about a two-to-three month process, with meetings kind of shuffled in between. SMEC, we are shoving it into basically a six-week period, and we are meeting every week, and we are hammering through. But we are doing SMECs online as well. Those of us that are able to meet in person, we meet in person. Jen and Erin, you guys can attest to this, you know, say there's discussions that need to have, the online group go together, they discuss. The in-person group discusses, and then we combine everything, and MSBA takes care of all the surveys, all the data for us. Basically, for the most part, all the paperwork. They help us build this as it goes. So, we did approve this in April, April or-
March, April?
It was April or May. We did already approve to go through this, but I just wanted to show you guys, make sure you guys saw the contract of everything in a little more detail of everything that will be happening versus what we had, you know, for information before. And then, at the request of the LOEA at Meet and Confer, they were wondering if we already had some of these things on record or on file. I did reach out to MSBA. If they would look back, Gary Lee, the time that we thought we had done this, MSBA wasn't even doing it at that time. So, and I requested, they, they sent it on to their chief financial person. I never heard back that they found any billing. They looked all the way through the billing. I never heard back that they found anything. So, I just know that going through, and it is a lot of work, board members, I'm not going to lie to you, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of time. Average meetings are about two hours. Like I said, ours would be over a longer time. SMEC, we're doing it every week. We did last Thursday, we got Thursday again.
And I would not recommend it. We're, we're tired at the end of the day, because it's been so many. I would definitely say, hey, plan your, our school year around this. You know, don't say, oh, we need to get it done in December. You're not purposeful in your decisions.
Yeah.
You know, we're just, we struggle. We're tired. Like, Erin and I will talk the next day, like, I didn't catch that part, or who said that? Because you're just, you don't want to talk about it anymore.
Yep. So we're looking at, Gary's thinking about a two-to-three month process, and he would like to start, you know, the beginning of August. Excuse me, so we look at starting at August, and we go through August, September, and possibly maybe into October, or at least that way, the start of the school year, give us a good start going off. But, we've never had this before. I talked to some of the other board chairs around, because we were all on the SMEC committee together as well. They've all enjoyed it. They thought the process was very good. It makes the board think, it makes the admin think, it has support staff, as I'm pointing at Chris. I know. Teachers are involved as well, as well as community members that have kids, don't have kids. It's a wide range of views of looking deep at the school. What are our goals? What are our priorities? What are we great at? And what do we need to fix?
So, and that is the best part of strategic planning, is where you get every entity to have a voice. You know, that's what you have to have. You do to have a quality strategic plan, and one that's purposeful, and one that sticks, you know, that you can, that'll glob onto the district, you know?
Yep, and this kind of ties in, too, with World's Best Workforce. One of the goals that we're looking at with SMEC, because we are now our own school district, we have to adhere to World's Best Workforce statutes as well, so that's one of the things we're looking at. Are we adhering to, you know, legal requirements that we have to do? So I know that we're bringing back system accountability next month, that this, this will help with that as well, to make sure that we're doing what we need, that we are prepared to give our kids the best things possible. So, the biggest thing was that we just want you guys to see the contract. That way Jen's, like I said, we've already approved it. Jen can go ahead and sign it off and send it off to Gary. From there, Gary called me yesterday, let me know everything was on the way, so after everything, they received the contract, we will look at dates of what will and will not work. I know for SMEC, we try as much as possible to get every member there we can.
What I might suggest to him, if he reaches out to me, is if he sends a Google survey, like, I give him all your emails.
Yes.
Because that is the best thing, where you get that calendar, and you check off what the dates you like and the times you like.
Yep, I was going to say the same thing.
That's like, really-
If you guys kind of know what your schedules are.
And then the majority, this is, it works for the majority. If they're, let's say it's Deb and Chad can't make that date, at least the majority is there, and we can fill you in, kind of thing. But, I'm going to remind me to suggest that when he does email us. I didn't write it down. I'll forget.
Does anybody have any questions about the strategic plan? Okay. And Jen, I guess we're good to go to sign her and get her sent off?
Yeah. I'll send it off, and you'll be on the response.
Okay. I got the note about the email.
I'll do it for tomorrow.
Does anybody have any questions for Jen regarding the Superintendent's Report?
Enjoy your-
Were you done?
STAR report reading. I don't, I can keep going.
I don't.
But summer. Next, we will move on to School Board Committee Reports. Community, Edie CFE, myself, Chad, Deb, we did not meet since Denver, you know, since a few months ago. Summer rec classes are going really good. We've had some really good numbers. Otherwise, that's all I have. Finance Committee, we have not, we haven't met at all yet for Finance Committee.
No, you will. Actually, Kristi and I talked about it today, getting you two together with us, just as an initial meeting to talk about, hey, this is what the budget looks like going into the year, and then give you some ideas of how it may change with my narratives, where we're going to put money off that COVID dollar. But I want to wait till after July, where I get some new narratives in there. I did send that out, they're like, oh, I got to wait a little bit, because I want to see where that dollar is going.
Okay.
But yes, so you should expect that probably. I want to meet with you guys before September, if, if we can. Kind of plan that way, I'll let you know, but kind of plan for that before September.
Okay, next is Meet and Confer. We have not met with the staff. We meet again with them in August. As for MSBA, the only thing really coming out of there is you guys get everything in emails, so I'm not going to bore you all with more details. You can read them. Anything from the State High School League?
Can I go back? Oh, I'm sorry. No, I apologize. Do we have to post that meeting in August? Do we have to post that we're having that?
Yep, we have to post it three days.
Three days, and then, do you know the date that it is?
That is in my other notes at home.
Okay, all right.
I will have to double-check that, right?
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, Dave. All right. Okay, nothing from the High School League. Scholarship Committee, Chad and Pat.
Chad, do you remember what the number was that we gave out to the seniors? My head wants to say eighty-one thousand.
Eighty-one is what I was thinking.
Yeah, to the seniors this year, so hopefully they all use it. Other than that, that's all I got.
That's great. Next, Certified Negotiations. This evening, Dave, myself, and Pat, and Jen, met with Erin. We are getting started on working on the principal renewal contract. So, we will look to meet more about the middle of July, next time again, to continue on discussions. Non-certified negotiations.
Yeah, we haven't reached a tentative agreement.
Yeah, we've, we've got the tentative, and we're just waiting on all the final wording, and it'll, yeah, we'll pass it along when we see it.
Yep.
Went good?
Yep.
Next, SMEC. I will not bore you again with all the fun of strategic planning, but I highlighted a couple of things that I thought were pretty, pretty good that came out in Dan's monthly email. The ALC, they graduated thirty kids this year, which was, which was great. The summer session, they do credit recovery in the summer. They have seventy-five students enrolled right now. SMEC Academy also started last week. They have over one hundred and ten students in the June session, that's strategic planning. And then, we kind of talked about this a little bit with the kindergarten. We will have, be needing to look for Level III paras for the cards position for some of the incoming kindergartners. So I was poked by Denise Kennedy if I knew anybody, so I'm going to poke all of you now, that if you know anyone that may be looking for a para job, we will be needing some paras in the Level III cards room.
In the elementary.
In the elementary, yes. We actually will need, I think Denise's last time she told me, was three down in the elementary and one up in the middle school, high school. So we'll have a few openings there. District Policy. Yes? Nothing? You're good? Systems Accountability- Systems accountability, like I said, we'll be bringing that back in July and like I said, the strategic plan will help make sure that we are meeting what needs to be done. Buildings and grounds.
We'll be meeting in July.
I also want to add that based on the timeline we did for the eval, we need to close out the rest of that program. So based on the email I sent, because our timeline was shifted due to when we did everything, we will look to have Jen give any type of update she would like to give to her April presentation at the July meeting. I will have the paperwork for you guys to fill out, whether you want to write it on it or I can send you electronic copy. I will have a date on there for you guys to please get that back for not only Jen, but for our board evaluation as well. That way I can compile everything, I'll review everything with Jen, we'll do the summary in August and then we'll look at setting for next school year. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Nope. Okay. Calendar updates coming, July twelfth, we have a policy committee meeting at eight AM in the media center. July nineteenth, we have a buildings and grounds committee at five o'clock and on the nineteenth, we also have the next school board meeting at six PM. If nobody has anything else, we look for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Deb. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.